The time is seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Lansing City Council for September eighth, 2025. And Clerk, could you please do the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are eight members present in quorum. We are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anyone that we want to remember tonight? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we all keep Arlene Sharkey in mind. She passed away. Her husband Joel is organizing the funeral now. They live in Frandora Hills, and they've been very involved with NAMI and a variety of other organizations in our community, and she passed. So I would ask that we keep her and her family in mind. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Can we please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of August 25th.
Vice President Carter.
I will make a motion to approve the August 25th minutes as presented.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a presentation on Act Two, 2025.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this is a presentation on Act Two, 2025, sale city property lot 57 at Brown and Brownfield Plan, number 89 Turner North Development, 1400 block of Turner Street. Any of those that are in the audience that would like to speak to this, please come down. Now is your time. It's like we got Eric Heltzer and Chris Klein. Thank you, guys. Make sure your green light's on before you start presenting, and the floor is yours, and open for questions afterwards.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Council. My name's Chris Klein with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, and with me this evening is Eric Heltzer, one of the co-managers for the Turner North Development. So we'll be speaking on mainly the Brownfield. We have a presentation on that, but as was mentioned with the Act Thirty-Three process and the purchase of a city lot that is part of this development. It's one of, I believe, six parcels that encompasses the development. The others are private parcels that have been acquired by the developer. And so happy to answer, you know, questions on that or bring you any answers there. That was also discussed at committee. But with that, we can dive into the Brownfield Plan presentation.
Good evening. As Chris said, this is my name is Eric Heltzer, and with the development team. Let me see if we can get this. Okay, good. These are the team members that we have on the project. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, these are the major partners that have been engaged for this development. We have a local architect here, Studio Intrigue. We have PEA Group, who is former formerly LSG, and then PM Environmental as well, formerly is now Pinchin. So a couple acquisitions that have occurred over the years here in Lansing. And then our general contractors, Wolverine Building Group, and my company is Advanced Redevelopment Solutions. My partner cannot be here today, Craig Willen. Craig is with Develop Detroit. They're a large affordable housing developer predominantly focused on Detroit, Michigan's housing, and they have expanded throughout the state. They have come to Lansing. This will be their first venture in Lansing. Craig could not be here today. He apologizes. He was going to be here, but he had a family emergency and is at the hospital with some family tending to them. So our company believes that equity should be at the forefront. This is how neighborhoods should all be shaped. These are housing and amenities that range for all kinds of residents. That's regardless of age, race, gender, sexual orientation, and income. And we believe very firmly in that belief, and that is the foundation of what Craig and I believe in. And that is one of the reasons why Craig and I came together to do this project. We work in a positive community, a positive social aspect. We want to elevate the housing standards, and as you're going to see in this particular area, we're going to be working to create this workforce housing that is going to strive to be more affordable and enriching experience for our residents. So affordable. I'm not going to belabor this point, but I think it's important to, if you can see some of these starting salaries that we're targeting here. These are, this first slide is related to what everybody refers to as area median income. And when they talk about workforce housing, they talk about 80 to 120% of the area median income. However, what we're really looking at is from a starting salary is below that 80% area median income. And these are real salaries for real individuals who would be starting here. Some of these jobs are city Lansing jobs. You have everything here from maintenance workers, firefighters, you got teachers, technicians. And this just gives you an idea of the actual salaries of these particular starting salaries for those individuals who are starting out in life. And they need to have, you know, an affordable housing. So what does that mean? So when you look at a salary, we like to talk about salaries rather than area median income. And that means when you equate those salaries to what they can actually afford to live, and that's including utilities, you're looking at that center column there with the maximum housing expense at 30%. So those are the target numbers that we're looking at for those particular salaries. If you look at the next slide here, this is, it gives you an idea across all of Lansing employees. Obviously, some of this data is lagging, so we are looking at 2022 and 2023. We also picked on the Lansing School District, so you could see an average salary across that school district. And then we picked a few other salaries. So this just gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're targeting. So all of these are below actually 80% of the area median income, and what the state says is workforce between 80 and 120. Let's see here. Covered that, so I'll skip to the next one. Maybe? There we go. Sorry about that. So we are located in the heart of Old Town. What I would say is considered on the north side of Old Town on Turner Street. So we are due south of north. A lot of people think this Grand River. When you go north on Turner, that actually connects you up to North Street. If you hang a left, go west at that intersection, it will connect up to Grand River. We, the best way to put reference on this is that we're immediately north of the condominiums that are located along the Lansing River Trail on the west side of the street. So you can see that here. It's about 1.2 acres. Got a little lag there. Here's a more of a blow up of the property. You can see the condominiums there. So we're at the northwest intersection of Dodge River Drive and Turner. So all of these properties that you see here, the buildings that are there, every one of them has been deemed functionally obsolete. Most of them have been vacant for several decades. One was lived in as early as January of this year, but it has been closed and shut down. One of the reasons we identified this property is not only is it going to be a major improvement to the neighborhood in addressing this blighted block, but we're going to be able to access all of the wonderful amenities that the city has. So you can see the listing of parks that we're very close to, and obviously, the Lansing River Trail is right there. We got the mansion, mansion rather, immediately to the north, and all of the park systems that are to the south and to the heart of downtown. So quick connection to everything. Another reason is we're very close to three bus stops, right on our doorstep, across the street, and just outside of our property boundaries. So that's another nice convenient thing for our residents. So this area shows you the proximity to where we are, to the park and to the mansion, and the close proximity to that. We're adjacent to neighbors immediately to the west in that neighborhood. And just a couple of quick photos. This is the intersection looking to the northwest. Looking southwest along Turner. And this is what will be on the property when we're done. So we have 76 workforce housing units in a four-story building. We have a community space that's for our residents right in the corner. Yes?
We actually have a question. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, sorry. Could you go back to the slide that had the, the map of the aerial with the yellow square highlighting the bus stops? There you go. That one. Thank you. Oops. Next one. CD TV.
Go back to that one.
Right there. You got it. You mentioned neighbors to the west. This might be premature, but are you planning to, or are you working with the city to plan to connect to Black Court? Or will that continue just to be a court there?
So Black Court, we're not connecting to Black Court. Yep, now actually daylight that since you're interested about the neighbors to the west. And I'll show you our connectivity and how we're going to handle that.
Thank you.
No, good question. Thank you. There we go. Okay. Our project, like I was saying, is going to have a community space that's going to be at the corner, Dodge River and Turner for our residents. One of the things that we took tremendous time in, and we had several variations, was our elevation, our building materials. So the condominiums immediately to the south of us are all brick. This part of town, if you get a chance, if you haven't been there recently, take a drive from the south moving north. The historic nature of Old Town ends actually south, the entire city block south of us, south of the condominiums, and then it transitions into the condominiums. The rest of Old Town to the north tends to be more industrial in nature, warehousing type businesses, a lot of vacant buildings and property. And then our block was particularly blighted, being old residential homes. So what we wanted to do is have a nice transition with the condos to the south and bring in that brick. So that's why we anchored that on that particular corner, but we yet wanted to have more of a modern style building as we moved north. Went through a public meeting where we invited all of the businesses of Old Town. We also invited all the residents, and we had that back in April. And we did an introduction to our project to get feedback on, not only in the development itself, but the renderings and so forth. It's about a two-hour meeting that we held at Urban Beat on Turner. We had well over 80 people in attendance, and everybody was very excited about the project when they left. And this was one of the particular things that they liked, was that transition and that blend, and how we handled that. So this is now looking to the southwest along Turner, so you can see the other side of that building as you're coming from the north to the south. This is a site plan that you can see where, and I'm going to show you the next one here where the Black Court comes in. So what we wanted to do with the form-based code is put the building right up on top of the street, in both corners, and hard anchor that. Put our parking in the rear. We also did not want to have a curb cut, another additional curb cut on Turner. That was a very intentional thing, and so we wanted to do this as one building as opposed to two. And we also intended not to enter on the north side of our property. Our entrance is going to be on Dodge River for the parking that comes in. Everybody will dump onto Dodge River and then make their way back to Turner Street. So this gives a little bit better idea on the site plan as far as where Black Court is. So if you look at the far right-hand side of this illustration, you can see what we have there is as an easement. That is a utility easement only for construction of all of our infrastructure that needs to enter on that building. Black Court is at the far top right-hand corner of that. That will remain a dead-end street. We're going to be working with fire and police to see if they would like emergency breakway entrance at that point. We've done that in other projects over the years in other cities. So something that we're going to offer to fire and police, but we will not be using that as a pass-through. Another reason it's nice when you have a building of this scale, fire and police can enter along that side of the building, especially fire. They can actually bring a fire truck. They like to access buildings on all four sides where possible. So that's also with that intention. There is an existing curb cut there. We're taking advantage of that curb cut. So is there any further question on that site plan? Okay. So this shows you the floor plate of floors. Actually, I'm going to go back because I skipped that. It was focused on the plan. You can see first floor floor plate on this here at the bottom. You can see the community space on the bottom left-hand corner, and then the residential units that are the remaining part. And then this floors two through four on the upper image, they all repeat themselves. So what we have is 57 one-bedrooms. We have 15 two-bedrooms and four three-bedrooms. A lot of the units being built in the city right now are studios and one-bedroom apartments. This was intentional, the way we've done this layout. We did not want to have the studios in here. We feel that it's underserved in this market. We wanted to offer larger unit as well. Most of these units are quite large in comparison to other construction units that are going on, but we wanted to also bring in some more two-bedrooms and then introduce some three-bedrooms, which is pretty much unheard of these days. So we think we have a nice unit mix that's going to encourage people that to stay longer, and some young families hopefully will be staying in this location. So we're bringing a very significant investment. Right now, it's estimated at $26 million. We're also doing some major improvements, which I'll show you here as well, to the entire block as far as public infrastructure goes. It will be significantly transformative for this area of town. You talked to a lot of the residents of the condominiums. You talked to the businesses. I talked to people that are walking to, for example, ozone, which is somewhat disconnected a couple blocks from the majority of the retail and the commercial that's in downtown Old Town. And a lot of people say they do not like to walk past Dodge River Drive. They don't feel safe. It's dark. It doesn't have the street lanterns because they end at Dodge River Drive. So when we're done with this project, we're hopeful that it'll spur additional development of the underutilized property that's across the street, a lot of those industrial buildings and a lot of the vacant lots that are predominantly dirt lots around us. And of course, we're going to be eliminating the functionally obsolete buildings and cleaning up the property and increasing the property's tax value significantly. The last bullet that you see here, I'm going to go through a couple more slides, and I'll be done and happy to take some questions. We're going to be significantly improving Turner Street and Dodge River Street with sidewalks, access points to the River Trail, roads, landscaping, and street lamps, and electric. How we're going to do that? So if you look at this next illustration here, this is the existing aerial photo. Right now, there is no access point down Dodge River to get to the neighborhood sidewalks or to the River Trail, and it's not ADA compliant. So what we're proposing, and we're going to be working carefully with LEDC and city planning, is we're going to dedicate the north part of our, southern part rather, of our property, which is the north spot along Dodge River running east and west for sidewalks and street lamps, and then connecting it all the way to where you see that bend. So you can see where the sidewalk ends there on the far west-hand side where the curve is in the road. We're going to be connecting up to that location and then rebuilding that so that it's ADA compliant, and it also then goes across the street and it connects to the River Trail. Right now, people that are on the north side, when they're trying to get to the River Trail or coming from the River Trail, they have to jump a curve. They go into the road because there's no sidewalk. And then they get, once they get on Turner, there's sidewalks. But we're going to improve that and fix that problem. So when they redid Turner Street, they also redid Dodge River, but they redid Dodge River going north and south. They did not do Dodge River connection to Turner east and west. And so that far right-hand photo, you can see the image, the street is busted up, has not been improved in a very long time, even the approaches. And you can see that transition line on that far left-hand upper photo. So where you see the two yellow lines at the bottom picture, that's, we're going to rebuild the street as well, and that's going to be part of our development. This is an image in the upper top image. You can see where the street lamps end. And then you can look at that bottom, a photo that runs north and south, and we're going to be replacing all of the sidewalk, the landscaping and the lighting, in bringing the old character of the street lamps. With that, we're looking at demolishing all of the buildings in November. We would like to have them removed before the end of the year, before cold settles in. We have been having problems at the property. We've been keeping it maintained, but we want to remove the nuisance that's there and the attractiveness of those blighted and vacant buildings. So we want to take care of that. We're going to be able to go vertical with our financing in August of 2026, and according to our contractor, depending on materials, and there's a lot of uncertainty right now in the market. Normally, we'd be able to complete a building like this in 15 to 18 months' time, but they're telling us to plan 18 to 24, just for a little bit of safety. And that's where we're at with our schedule. So with that, I am done, and I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I can just provide just a quick overview of the Brownfield request. So it is a 30-year plan, and that would include activities, including the demolition, infrastructure improvement. There's a considerable amount here. The, just looking up the total amount here for the capture. We have the total for local taxes is about 8.9 million, and then the amount for state taxes would be about 4.3. And so with that, as I mentioned, it is, part of this is purchasing the city lot, and so that is above the appraisal that was done in about 2023. I think that came in around 100,000. So working with the development team, the offer there is at 105,000. But that would allow them, because it's kind of right in the middle of the parcels that they assembled, to be able to do this development. That is all I have. If there's any questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks for being here today. Appreciate you guys presenting. Thanks for offering up the opportunity for me to meet with you a few weeks back, Eric, and showing up to the development and planning. Just real quick, that property that we, the city will potentially be selling for you, that's something that we received from, what is it, the Parks Department? Or it was the DNR for $75 back in 1990 or 95?
Yeah, it was the early 90s.
In the early 90s, okay. And just one about the design here. I know you said this front area is brick, but I thought you mentioned it was going to be the other, the whole exterior was going to be hard service. What's the other portion of the building going to be made out of?
Yep, cement board. There's metal on there as well. So it's all hard surface. Yep, no vinyl.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. A few questions. First is, what was the definition of workforce housing? Because I see the graph, and it ranges on this graph from 39,000 at the low end up to 52,000. Did you all lock something down as workforce, or is that it?
So that's just for illustration that the, underneath this act, under the Brownfield Act, they require us to be at or below 120% AMI technically. Workforce, the actual definition is 80 to 120% of the area median income. Our project is unique, and I actually should have stated it, and I did not state this, so I apologize. We're going to be income averaging all of our units at 80% AMI. We'll be offering below 80% AMI 59 units. So considerable investment to the city. We're also going to enter into a compliance obligation, a monitoring program for that, those numbers for 20 years.
I'm sorry. Can you, for some people that don't know what all that means, so what salary range would all that calculate out to be in your opinion?
I'll use the example that was there. I don't know if you have. I can, I can go back. That's okay. Here.
And then I would also, while you're looking, I'll point out that, for example, all city employees, 47,000, all city employees means that we also have the mayor's budget, the city attorney's budget, a lot of higher salaries, the police chiefs, all of those high-ranking lieutenants, fire chiefs, and then...
So it tends to skew at high.
Right. And that's really for all of those, except for cosmetologists, which, interesting because I don't think they really have a salary. So, so all of those other ones skew high, and we're still within the range. So did you, do you know what the salary range is?
So I do not. This information was provided to us. Some of this, we got through, through LEDC support, through Lansing Economic Area Partnership, through the Chamber. Some of this is publicly available, obviously, on city website, so I don't know the range, but they did purport out the average.
Okay. So, I mean, there's just some reason to question at least that range for the professions you have. I'm not saying that's not considered workforce, but if it is, a lot of the city employers actually wouldn't fall within that range. It would be less than that.
Absolutely. That's why I think it's better really to kind of look at more, when you looked at a skilled trade worker, or you look at a firefighter, or you look at a teacher, you look at individuals' salaries for that job. That average was just really for optics to look at, hey, if you looked at the entire city without picking on an individual, what would that average look like? But when we, when we have to income monitor these annually, and we have to do our reporting, we look at the individual salaries for each of these families and individuals coming in on an annual basis.
Sure. Thank you. And I'm just trying to understand, because you, you do have two slides of what is workforce housing, so, and it does have salary ranges. Maybe because we're going to be here again, I think, you can lock that down for what your definition is for this project. Because I'd also point out, you mentioned at the beginning, the vision is amenities for all people, like a neighborhood. You have different income levels. It was on the slide, and different amenities for everyone. So then when I see 76 units on a couple blocks, I think of that as almost like a neighborhood.
Absolutely.
It's enough families to be a neighborhood. So then, there's still a tight range of people who could probably actually afford it. You did mention nearby amenities and parks, which made me think of Dietrich Park, which is nearby, and all the people there. Not saying that they would qualify, because I don't think they have that much, or else they would probably be in a different apartment maybe. But it's interesting because the amenities were River Trail connections, nearby businesses, close to downtown, parks. I think that's why people choose, out of their limited options, maybe to try to live there. So could you, on these 76 units, I know you guys already kind of locked a lot of things in, but could you have a range on the salaries, at least a few units out of the 76? And also, can you provide an answer, not today, but whether you can commit to having some of those units inspected by HUD so that they can be for voucher recipients of Section 8? Because... inspected by HUD so that they can be for voucher recipients of Section 8? Because I actually went through this process recently. All you have to do is get an inspection and follow up on everything.
Absolutely. We will not reject a tenant-based voucher. That'll be acceptable.
Sure. But the, the manager has to take proactive steps. It's not the only the tenant that can say, "Hey, make this happen."
Yep. No, no. And that's the, that's the root of it. I, I would encourage you to look at Develop Detroit, look at their projects. We have, um, a lot of projects, a majority of the projects, that are truly affordable. Um, though, most of those income average at or below 60% AMI. Um, they, they, they provide all of the assistance necessary and, and do have projects like that. Um, our range is, is going to be wide. It will vary annually because we have to keep a compliance balance. So we have to income average at 80. Um, we also have to maintain below 80% AMI, and that could be 70, 60, could be a couple 50s. I don't know what the numbers are, but in, as part of the income averaging, uh, we are committed to a significant portion of our units at or below 80. So, uh, we can't guarantee every number of units for every, every point, uh, because we have to hit our averages annually. So it just depends on when people leave, uh, as a tenant and, and when we bring new ones in.
Okay, thank you. And I'll leave you just with, because I know we'll probably see more on this, is the answer to the range you're expecting and whether you can find some that go below that range and whether you can do vouchers. And then last point to, um, Chris, the Brownfield eligible demolition, it looks like a couple houses and can, if it came from the DNR, that seems like it's kind of nature-y and maybe not contaminated? Is there more than just the demolition and the clearing of the area?
Uh, so most of the environmental assessments, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, they were clear of asbestos or, um, uh, any, uh, true, like, contamination that would make it, I don't believe, are any of these a facility?
No, in fact, in fact, I can answer this. So we did complete our Phase 1 on the entire development site, and we did complete a Phase 2 ESA, the environmental site assessment. There were concerns found, but there was no contamination identified. So at least from a, which is rare in our work, uh, for a pre-developed site, to actually have what we consider a clean site, other than the buildings that are blighted and, and, and being there. So we're fortunate in that regard that we don't have contamination below the, below the surface.
It was a lot, excuse me. I was going to say, and I'm done after this, it just doesn't seem like a lot of work is required to get that, you know, to brownfield it up and-
Yeah, so the, the demolition is quite, quite expensive. Um, we also have, and I didn't go into the details, but I, I'm just going to state a couple of things. So when we, um, proposed on the site for the city lot, it was not known to anybody, but there is an old raw water well line that bisects down the middle, uh, the city lot. And so it, it took us about nine months to work through the logistics with Board of Water and Light in order to abandon that. We have to pay for that abandonment. We also have to remove, uh, immediately to the west of the city lot, uh, is a separate parcel in the middle of the neighborhood that is a raw water well. Um, that is a potable water well that draws from the aquifer, gets sent to the treatment plant through this property, uh, to the other side of Turner, and then runs north to the treatment plant. We have to properly abandon that well as well. Um, additionally, there is electric that comes from the east to the west and feeds that entire neighborhood. And working with the board, that was another six to nine months, um, we have to do the upgrade improvements and all the demolition of the electric, uh, all the way north of Dodge River. And we're going to be putting it in the common, what I'll call the common backyard of our property and the neighbors, uh, kind of like an alley that runs between our properties. And we have to improve, uh, the power at North Street and then bring it down. So the entire neighborhood would be served from a new power distribution. Uh, and then we do have to remove all of the demo-out 1.2 city blocks in both corners of all the infrastructure that has not been replaced, between sidewalks, streets, curb, gutter, um, and then stormwater as well. So, which I didn't get into, which is on Dodge River. So, infrastructure and demolition, um, became a very large, uh, cost of our, our project that was not foreseen initially until we started digging into things.
And then, uh, just to add to that, because this is a housing, uh, Brownfield TIF, it, it does vary, you're, you're going to have some of those traditional activities, um, for the site prep and demolition and, and whatnot. Uh, but it does also include, uh, support for the housing gap, which, you know, maintaining those rents, um, allows that capture to, to support the development of the housing. So it's, it's a little bit different in that regard. Um, but yeah, to Eric's point, a lot, a lot more infrastructure was discovered, um, ever since we had the RFP process and just working through that the last year and a half. So, um, that, that became a big part of it.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Councilmember Hussein?
Yes, I, I guess first, um, I want to say that, you know, the, these parcels collectively are a disaster. And all of the eligible, like, you know, activities and expenses and things of that nature that you just outlined, um, are exactly why the state has given us these tools. Uh, because we could never, without these tools, period, compete with outline areas, uh, where developers can go in, uh, they can develop at, um, less cost, uh, and frankly, they can capture higher, higher rents, right, in those areas. Um, and so in order to reverse some of that, that blank that we see in the urban core, that's why these exist. And so I'm very, I'm, I'm happy, um, that we are looking at this for this particular, uh, section of our town. Um, and frankly, I'm glad that it's, I'm glad that you, Eric. I'm glad that it's Craig from, uh, Develop Detroit. I think you guys are good actors. Um, with that being said, and I asked you in committee, could you talk a little bit about, um, because I think the quality of the project, um, long-term, I think is dependent upon you all staying at the table. Uh, so is this a build and sell? Is this own and operate? Um, what are we looking at in terms of management, ongoing? Thank you.
Yep. Uh, we hold the real estate, uh, De-, Develop Detroit. Um, they are a nonprofit, Develop Detroit is. Um, and that is, uh, a part of their mission. Um, as far as, uh, operating and, and management, um, we use third-party management companies. So we vet those very carefully. We have not selected one yet. Um, we will, we always try to hire local first, so we're going to be looking at, uh, local management firms. Um, one of the other things too, um, uh, we, we have an obligation. We were successful in securing a grant, uh, from, uh, Inham County. And one of their requirements is for the grant, uh, eligible costs that, uh, we're going to be pursuing is that we use prevailing wage. And, uh, we're going to be using the higher lancing, uh, process that is in our purchase and development agreement. Um, and we have agreed to that. Um, I've worked on other projects throughout the city successfully with that. Uh, and we'll work, uh, with local labor to make sure that, uh, we're hiring as many people as we can.
And then the other thing, yeah, I appreciate that. I, I just wanted to give you some positive affirmations. I, you have been, I can only describe it as aggressively accessible. Uh, and that's actually really appreciated. Uh, and so, I mean, anybody at this day is, if they didn't know about this project, which I know everybody does, um, they, they would have had to, to really run away from, I think, you and Craig, uh, because you guys are, you're, you're kind of omnipresent. And, and what I appreciated about that, um, is that, you know, the transparent nature of it, but it, it, there's no, there's no smoke and mirrors with regard to this project. And so you believe in the project, um, you believe it has lakes to stand on, and you're willing to have those conversations. You had, have, have had those conversations with everybody, including the, the condo association, including OTCA. Uh, so you did it right, and we appreciate you.
I, I appreciate saying that. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Yep. Not a problem.
And our next presentation is on the payment in lieu of taxes for Evergreen Town Homes.
And I've got Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I believe we have Justin Golden and Matthew Temkin Well, good evening, all. Please, uh, make sure your green light is on, uh, on the actual microphone. Press the button, you'll be able to tell one way. There it is. Um, the floor is yours, and, uh, please present, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I will be teeing off this evening. Um, I am not Raleigh Van Fossen. My name is Erin Butendorf. I'm the Community Development Manager for the City of Lansing's Economic Development Planning Department. And I'm here, um, as a fill-in, um, to share, um, I am introducing Justin and Matt this mor-, uh, this afternoon, as far as, uh, our workforce and pay, payment in lieu of taxes, um, for Evergreen Park. So this was, um, the workforce payment in lieu of taxes has been, uh, was approved by this body last year. Um, is a type of pilot. It alters from the traditional pilot that requests the council of receiving, um, increasing a household income range. So previously it was less than 60% of the area median, and now it's aligned for 80 to 120%. And, um, again, all workforce pilot percentage requests are required by council. So my, the office that I oversee, we receive the application and we complete the initial review. So we're looking at the performa, we're looking at the eligibility, we're looking at, um, essentially the whole application for a full completeness, as well as, um, myself and a team member. We did go out to the property with a code compliance member so we could actually see what we were looking at. This was back in May. Um, so I'm sure there's been a lot of progress since then. It was also very rainy that day. Um, in addition, we, uh, contacted the assessor's office, building safety, um, code, just for, um, any background information, as well as our planning and zoning. So there's a lot of, um, information gathering. And, um, from there, um, essentially knowing that, uh, Justin and Matt have already gone in front of Development and Planning Committee, um, just a brief, uh, piece, this is, uh, property was previously known as Autumn Ridge. It's now, um, as of Evergreen Park of April 2024. It's an over 600-unit community off Long Boulevard, so it's near Oak Park YMCA. And, um, they have been working on this, um, quite aggressively. Um, so I will turn it over to the two of you.
Good evening.
That's louder.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, my name is Justin Golden. I'm joined by my partner here, Matthew Temkin, and our company is called Greatwater Opportunity Capital. 11 years ago, Matt and I set out on a mission to do one thing very well, and that was to create and preserve high-quality, safe, well-maintained workforce housing for middle-income earners. Today, we sit before you to request approval for an 8% workforce pilot, Lansing's very first pilot of its kind, on our project at 900 Long Boulevard in South Lansing, Ward 2, called Evergreen Park Town Homes and Apartments. Uh, I want to first start and recognize and thank the city council for inviting us to present today. We also want to thank Raleigh Van Fossen, the Director of Economic Development and Planning, Community Development Manager, Erin, and the many members of the city's Code Enforcement Division, who have been with us at this property now for countless hours for the last year. Our entire team, or most of our team is actually back there as well, our property managers, leasing agents, service managers, and we're excited to present it to you today. Um, we appreciate all the partnership between the city and ourselves and all the time that has been spent on this property. Last year, Evergreen Park, which was previously known as Oak Park Village or, uh, Autumn Ridge, depending on how long you've been here, um, was on the brink. The owner was in a $40 million lawsuit with the city, and every single residence was pink-tagged. 20% of the property was red-tagged, which means it was deemed legally uninhabitable, and they were filled with people. We stepped in to take responsibility for the turnaround, and in just over a year, we've made significant progress. There's still more work to do, and tonight we're asking for approval and support so we can finish the job. Looks like that's moving. Evergreen Park spans roughly 62 acres with a YMCA on-site, 77 buildings totaling 620,000 square feet, and 618 residences across one, two, and three-bedroom homes. Two-thirds of the property are two- and three-bedroom homes. They're actually very large townhomes that are similar to actual ho- houses. This property was built in 1977. It's Lansing's single largest residential property. When a property of this size is healthy, it supports local communities, small businesses, and reduces pressure on public services. And when it's distressed, like it was, the opposite happens and everyone suffers. So who are we serving at Evergreen Park? People earning roughly $25 to $30 an hour, and these are often referred to as the missing middle. These are, thank nurses and techs at Sparrow and McLaren, educators in the Lansing School District, municipal employees and skilled trades. These residents want stable, well-managed homes they can count on, and they're the backbone of a safer, stronger neighborhood. We purchased Evergreen Park on May 7th, 2024, from a negligent owner group, ownership group. At closing, all 618 residences were pink-tagged and 118 were red-tagged. The property was disgusting and dangerous. You can see by those pictures up on the screen. Insurance companies would no longer cover the risk of this property. So we had to call literally everyone that we could to find a way to insure this property. It was that dangerous, and the life safety risks at this property made it uninsurable by most standard carriers. The property, just for reference, the property insurance costs about three times more than what a traditional property of this size would cost. So we got to work, and that was what we inherited, and it was nothing short of a disaster. We got to work with the Code Enforcement, uh, Division, and the city staff to prioritize life safety, reopen the units responsibly and set path for, set the path to full compliance. Our residents and neighbors are seeing the difference. When we stepped in, residents were embarrassed to live at Autumn Ridge. Now they are proud to call Evergreen Park their home again. Several are, actually, I think maybe a dozen or so residents have co-, have sent in letters to you, um, in support of our, of our plan there so far. Now they're proud to call Evergreen Park their home, and the YMCA, which is on-site, the leadership there has offered to collaborate with us on community programming, and we're now offering subsidized YMCA memberships for residents in good standing to promote healthy living. Before we took control, basic operations had failed. The site was barely staffed. Maintenance workers and contractors stopped coming to the property because they hadn't been paid in years. Roofs leaked, cockroaches and vermin flourished. The streets were full of potholes. The landscaping neglected for many seasons, and the pool sat inoperable. It was one of the worst properties that Matt and I had ever seen. We've seen some pretty difficult properties in our time. We've been doing this for about 11 years. Evergreen Park had become a magnet for crime, and it was an incredible burden on the city. Everyone knows this property. Everyone we've met in Lansing has said their grandmother used to live there, or they used to spend time there. And it was, it was evident that everyone remembered this property to be a much nicer version of it is, than it is today. Once we took it over, the conditions on the ground were far worse than we thought. And we'd visited the property for many, many months before acquiring it, but the work was much harder than we thought it would be. The process has taken much longer, and it was a very difficult situation with, that we walked into. It was circling the drain, and we needed to move quickly. So what have we done? It's been a little over a year. We've spent over $8 million to improve the property. We're going to have to spend a lot more to get to the finish line, but it's, we're off to a very good start. On the red-tagged units, which were deemed legally uninhabitable, we have reduced those from 118 to just two. And on the pink-tag residences, we cut those down from 618 to 390, and we're clearing tags every couple weeks. The, the code inspectors are literally at this property twice a week, three times a week. We're constantly scheduling with them and showing them the progress, and we've made quite a bit of progress so far. All 77 roofs were repaired or replaced, 19 carport and garage porticoes were rebuilt, major life safety issues in asphalt, lighting, and landscaping were corrected, and the clubhouse and pool were renovated fully and open all summer for residents to enjoy. We're proposing an 8% workforce pilot. Today, the site's $1 million property tax bill is an enormous weight. It represents about 30% of what we've collected in income over the last 12 months, and it makes the property not viable, given the required remaining investment. Under the workforce pilot, the city tax revenues will start a little over $500,000 and will grow steadily to roughly $1.5 million in year 15. As occupancy rises, operations stabilize, and the city's revenue rises with it. Most importantly, as we bring more units online, we can attract more middle-income households to stay in Lansing, pay city income taxes, and, instead of moving to nearby suburbs. Our target rents are set with a goal of 80% area median income. You heard a lot about 80% AMI in the previous presentation. A single 80% AMI earner makes $56,480 per year, which equates to roughly $27 an hour. This is the missing middle, people with jobs that earn too much to qualify for vouchers or Lytec housing, yet they're priced out of new market-rate housing and lacking the savings and credit to purchase their own homes. This chart shows the estimated 15-year property tax trajectory with an 8% workforce pilot. As I said, revenues begin around $526,000 in year one and grow to 1.5 million as the occupancy grows and the operations stabilize. If we can attract high-quality, working-class residents who pay their rent- If we can attract high-quality, working-class residents who pay their rent, the city benefits. Without the pilot, the property cannot support the capital and operating investment needed to clear more tags, stabilize occupancy by attracting new residents, and keep rents attainable for the workforce. With the pilot, the project pencils. Code compliance gets completed, long-term maintenance gets funded, the property can be fully occupied again, and tax revenues grow predictably. Again, while the resident base improves, the neighborhood quality rises too. In the fast, in the last five years, the average number of emergency calls to this property were a staggering five hundred calls per year. That's more than once a day, and it, a disaster. It's an enormous strain on the system. We've spoken to the police and fire workers, and they are all very, all too familiar with this property. Based on the current pace, we have, we have emergency service calls down by about forty percent year over year. Even with these steps forward, we're not insulated from criminal opportunists who see our investment as a chance to personally profit. We've been hit with break-ins, stolen materials, and the destruction and flooding of units that were finished and ready for inspection. And because of this, we recently had to sign a contract with the patrol, for a security, with a security company to have a patrol car at the property eight hours a day, seven days a week. Again, we're making progress, but there's still much more work to be done. This proposal advances council and administration priorities. Public safety and code compliance, fewer nine-one-one calls, neighborhood stabilization, reversing distress in the largest residential site in the city, and more money for Lansing. The city gets more income tax from residents, spends less on emergency services, and the property taxes at this property will grow to one and a half million dollars a year. There's no argument that everyone in this room wants that. So we're not stopping here. To continue, we need your support. Like, the workforce pilot program is designed to support properties and residents like ours at Evergreen Park. This program will let us invest further, create stable homes for residents, and continue the path upward for this neighborhood. And on behalf of our team and our residents, we respectfully request a yes vote on our eight percent pilot application. Thank you in advance, and if you have any questions, Matt and I would love to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. So, and it seems like you guys have done significant investment in a short period of time. Thank you for that, because I know the residents truly appreciate it. So, once again, just a summary, how much investment has currently been made since May of twenty twenty-four?
We've invested eight million dollars in hard costs alone. So that's just, that's asphalt, roofs, interiors, unit improvements, landscaping.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
So basically about seven hundred thousand a month? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. And good evening. I appreciate, you know, Justin and Matthew for being here. Obviously, we met sometime last year. I drove through there recently before this council meeting, and I'm, I'm impressed. You guys done a lot. I remember there was sheets of OSB, you know, covering up huge holes in the parking lot. You know, the, the carports that were basically falling over. You did a lot of good work in there. I know people are happy. You know, I too had family members that lived there back in Oak Park, and they also had the subsidy for the YMCA. So I think that's pretty awesome that you guys are bringing that back online. I just want to say kudos to you guys, the eight million dollars in capital investment definitely shows, and I appreciate the work you guys done in South Lansing. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Spadefor.
You said the number, thank you very much for being here. Obviously, appreciate the investment at night and day in those photos. The question I have, and you've said fifteen years in this, is the pilot for fifteen or is it thirty? I can't. Fifteen, oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, thank you for fixing it up. I go to the South Side Y a lot, and also remember people that stayed there, including the affordability of a lot of those units, right? So, back to the eighty percent. All right, you want one bedroom before utilities, right? You guys aren't, they pay for their utilities?
Yeah, they're generally separate.
Okay, so one bedroom, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars plus utilities.
That includes, that's the full housing burden, so that does include utilities.
Okay. So, if you have any kids, maybe you're a single parent, and you want two bedrooms, one thousand, six hundred, sixty-two. It is better to know at least that utilities are included on that. Honestly, I thought it wasn't, but it's still high. So the same questions I had for the other people. Can you commit to any lower than that average there? And especially so many units, because it's going from whatever the rents were over that time to whatever the rents are going to be. So it's really making it hard, like, that's the largest residential property in Lansing. It's six hundred and eighteen townhomes that are probably going to be however much more expensive. I know rents go up over the years than they were over time. So can any of them be lower, and can you commit to Section Eight? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, as far as them being lower, I would say that, like, currently on the two-bedrooms, like you're talking about specifically, average two-bedroom rents are a little over eleven hundred bucks now. And obviously, they'll grow over time. I mean, the eighty percent numbers, you know, we're currently below that. Let's say our average one-bedrooms now are, it was about eight hundred bucks. Is that right? This is where we at? Yeah. And so like, and then the two-bedrooms are actually around eleven hundred, a little bit less, and then the three-bedrooms, around twelve hundred. So they'll grow there. And as far as like Section Eight goes, I mean, the estimates that I have seen are that only one in four families that would be eligible for rental assistance in the state of Michigan have it. And it's not, it's basically because of a lack of resources. And so when we think about that, when we're trying to price these things and looking at, like, who we're providing housing to, we're really looking to provide housing for people that make between twenty and thirty bucks an hour. So, I mean, no aversion to vouchers or anything like that. I mean, in truth, there just aren't that many. And I think that what we're trying to do is provide housing for people that, you know, probably would qualify but don't have them.
Just a quick response. So maybe it's true that one in the four people who need them have them, but what is also true is that out of those one in four people that do have them, many of them cannot actually use them. And they, they look for places, people that accept it. So there is a need for voucher holders to have a place to use the vouchers here in Lansing. Just so, you know, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Yep. First of all, I applaud you. You look at those numbers, pink tags are down, maybe some two hundred and twenty-eight, and then red tags are down a hundred and sixteen. Fantastic. And then we'll be, you know, we've all seen the housing studies and things of that nature. So when we talk about need, this, there's an absolute need for this. We need diversity in housing, absolutely. I think everything Councilman Jackson speaks to is, is valid. And I, and again, you know, we talk a lot about this at this day, but we also have to have regional conversations about how we meet the need that is outlined in all these different housing studies. But this is absolutely a critical need in our community. Real quick with the three hundred and ninety pink tags, how many of those are inhabited? Do we know?
Not off the top of my head. I, the property right now is about sixty percent occupied.
Okay, so. My, my thing is you guys have been fantastic. We don't reward bad actors, right? You have not moved in anyone to a pink tag, correct? Pink tag.
We can't do that.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Okay, thank you. You can't, but it happens.
No.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep. Not on our watch.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I want to thank both of you for being down here tonight. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember remarks. Councilmember Hussein.
Yep, so I want to remind folks that we are back at it after a brief recess over the summer. So our next Southwest Lansing constituent contact meeting is actually this Saturday, September thirteenth, and that's at ten a.m. We are actually meeting at, as though Frieda Schmidt's South Side Community Center is not available on Saturdays, or at least not the Sandy Allen Room. We're going to actually meet at La Mulata Restaurant at five three three four South MLK. So this is right across the street from the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall. There will be food provided, so we hope you come out, support a small business, but also hear a couple of great presentations. We'll have Brent Forsberg with us to speak about two one three zero, the forthcoming development, two one three zero West Homes and the community capital piece of that. And then we'll also have Ingham County Commissioner Miles Johnson on hand. He actually brought to my attention a proposed development in Southwest Lansing, which would be a new Ingham County Youth Detention Center. And it had been kind of flying under the radar. There is actually a law and courts committee this Thursday at September, I'm sorry, September eleventh at six fifteen P.M. at the Ingham County Human Services Building at five three zero three South Cedar Street. Their current location is on Jolly Road, East Jolly Road. But what's being proposed is a, an investment in the development off West Homes, at sixteen zero one West Homes. This is by the Family Center. And so Miles would be there to talk a little bit about that. He actually chairs that particular committee. He is very, very interested in hearing from Southwest Lansing residents, business owners, et cetera. And so come out to that, but also if you have an opportunity to attend the, again, the Law and Courts Committee meeting on Thursday, September eleventh at six fifteen P.M. at five three zero three South Cedar Street, I'd highly encourage you to do so. So we hope to see you at the constituent contact meeting. Beyond that, we are, again, after some summer recesses, we are starting to see our neighborhood groups reactivate. That's always exciting. We have our Churchill Downs Community Association meeting, which will be September sixteenth, so that's next Tuesday, at six thirty P.M. at the Frieda Schmidt South Side Community Center at five eight two five Wise Road, and that is in the Sandy Allen Room. They have a number of community conversations and updates and things of that nature. But they also are going to have a guest speaker, Kim Murphy Kowlik, I believe, from Voters Not Politicians, should be there to discuss voting in some of our upcoming elections. So we hope to see you there. The Colonial Village Neighborhood Association, we, we saw some neighborhood associations kind of hit the mat during COVID. And unfortunately, some of them, you know, didn't get up after COVID. This particular group has been, I think, very intentional with their conversations over the last, you know, maybe year, maybe eighteen months, in trying to figure out a way to reorganize and reactivate. And so they actually, again, this is Colonial Village Neighborhood Association, will be meeting to discuss that reactivation, and that would be September sixteenth at Grace United Methodist at nineteen hundred Boston Boulevard at seven P.M. And they are asking that in advance of the meeting, if anyone is interested in a potential board position, that would be president, vice president, treasurer, treasurer, or secretary, to please email the group at colonialvillagelansing@gmail.com. And then lastly, the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association meeting will be September eighteenth, seven P.M. at Mayflower Church. That's at two nine zero one West Mount Hope. They have a new board member to introduce, that's exciting. And then they also have a guest speaker, Linda Flanagan, with Lansing Promise and Bold Lansing, who will share information about the Lansing Promise and Lansing Save Program. So we hope you make it out to your respective neighborhood association meetings. Of course, the Law and Courts Committee meeting this Thursday, and then our constituent contact meeting on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadefor.
Yeah, real quick, just wanted to announce the, just so you can get it in your calendars ahead of time. October twenty-fifth is the next at-large council member constituent meeting from ten a.m. to noon. I think we've settled on the new election. What do you call on that thing, Chris?
Lansing Elections Office.
Leo, we're going, moving from Rio to Leo, right? The Lansing Elections Office, ten a.m. to noon for the at-large members. And wanted to thank HRCS for their August twenty-sixth forum on the mod pod and the continuing discussion, which will take place on October thirtieth at five thirty at Foster. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other councilmember remarks? Seeing none, we are going to move on.
Okay. I have no announcements, so we are to community event announcements. If you have a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Church on Mount Hope and Pennsylvania, the Neighbors of Scott Woods. And I think they're going to be teaming up with the Charter Commission, so good luck with that. And the week after, the third Wednesday, will be the Old Everett Neighborhood Association meeting, September seventeenth. And I just want to note that it will not be held at the Village this time. It will actually be held at the South Lansing Library, due to the fact that the Village Lansing has already moved out of the Old Everett Neighborhood, so we won't be able to use it. So it will be from six thirty to seven thirty, because seven forty-five is our cutoff time, so just want to get that out. And also, if you want to join our neighborhood group, please email oenaLansing@yahoo.com.
Thank you. Other community events?
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemetery is will be holding its annual fall walking tour the last Sunday of this month on the twenty-eighth, from three to five, in Mount Hope Cemetery. Our theme this year is mayors, magistrates, and manufacturers, and will be featuring eighteen different people on sixteen different stops. It's free, it's open to the public, there's a halfway break with refreshments. So please mark your calendars again now. It's on the twenty-eighth, Sunday, September twenty-eighth, from three to five, Mount Hope Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Hi. The Women's Center of Greater Lansing is excited to host our dragon boat races again this year, and they are back on the river, which is super exciting, because they've been at Hawk Island for the past four years or so. There are two teams from Everett High School this year that are competing, and there's fifteen teams overall, I believe. We have opening ceremonies around nine thirty, and the races should end around two thirty, and closing ceremony will be close to four. We've got raffles, including cool things like overnights at Great Wolf Lodge and massage gift cards. We have activities for kids. We've got food trucks, lots of food trucks, which is exciting, lots of vendors. So please, everyone, come on down this Sunday, starting at around nine thirty.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right. Then with that, we are to sign up for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes items five through eighteen on the agenda, so five through eighteen. Please sign in on a blue sheet if you want to speak during this section, and we'll give you about another minute to get up and start signing in with the hand. And in the, with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few thank yous and congratulations. I want to congratulate the zoo for a wonderful walkabout event. I brought my eighty-nine and eighty-three-year-old parents to the event, and they loved it. They had a great time. They were in from Florida, and they told me that Lansing was just incredible. They haven't been here in probably eight years. So thank you to the zoo for, for making it very accessible. And also, congratulations to Chengdu Tea House for, at least Ribbons, for your reopening. So if you're craving tea, the Chengdu Tea House is up in, in Old Town. This week, we had a lot of very serious things going on tomorrow. I'll remind everybody, it's the, it's the wreath laying for firefighter Dennis Rodeman, who was tragically killed. So there will be a wreath laying tomorrow with our IAFF, with our Lansing firefighters and retirees. On Thursday, Thursday morning, we will have our nine eleven ceremony at Wentworth Park with our police officers and firefighters. It starts right about eight thirty, and, and the bells ring at the exact time that the, the planes hit the buildings, regardless of what's going on. So that's always a, a tough, a tough day, but a day that we, we all remember. On Friday, we have the La Mulata ribbon cutting that I am excited to, to go to. Wonderful new restaurant that Councilman Hussein mentioned on the, on the southwest side. We needed one badly, and, and I encourage everybody to go. The food is fantastic. And then Saturday, I don't know how much this has been promoted yet, but the Lansing Empowerment Network is doing an event. I can't remember the title. Councilwoman Pelavonic, who might help me out, but maybe not. I can't remember the title, but it's a wonderful event at Rio School, and they're going to have dunk tanks. So I will be in the dunk tank on Saturday, so you can come. Village block party. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Carter. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Carter. The Councilwoman Carter bails me out, thank you. But I will be in the dunk tank. Mike Lynn will be in the dunk tank. Chief Backus will be in the dunk tank. Councilwoman Pelivonaglu will be in the dunk tank. No. So it's going to be an interesting day, be a lot of fun. I've never sat in a dunk tank before, but come throw a ball and dunk the mayor, one of your councilpeople, your police chief, Mike Lynn and others, but it'd be a good cause, so I'm excited to do that. That's right, warm up the arm. And that's what I've got. Thank you, Mr. President.
What time?
The event is 12 to 4:00. I will be in the tank somewhere between probably 12:30.
We'll know when you're in the tank.
That's right. You will all know when I'm in the tank. I'm expecting lots of money to be made on that day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Schor.
All right. With that, we are to public comment on legislative matters. Again, that's items 5 through 18 on the agenda. We have one person signed in, that's Nicholas Zandi.
So you all know who I am, Nicholas Zandi, president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association and second ward residence. Now, I'm going to be speaking on the board commission appointments, and, well, again, I've said this before, I'll say it again, I have nothing personal against the people that have, that are being reappointed. However, I want to mention one of the groups. I don't think this is the specific person who replaced, you know, who, but I will mention this, because what you've been, because what the mayor's been doing with the board appointments has been basically treating them like they're his pawns. And it is absolutely, and it's been shown very frequent, very prominently, when Farhan was treated that way. Now, again, maybe his statements aren't brought up by facts, but he's well within his right to be honest with the people about crime and about, you know, community involvement in policing. And for the mayor to treat him like that is just downright despicable and uncalled for. And to not reappoint him is just a travesty, to say the least. It's basically getting rid of a prominent person of color from the government. And for any way of how I would handle the whole appointments to the boards, is I believe that it should be the council first and foremost who appoints board members as a collective, so that they can make an agreement on who is best for it, and they can reappoint or not reappoint whoever they feel like it, if they haven't done a good job, so that, and instead, it should be the, and the mayor should be the one who confirms them, and not the other way around, like it is right now. Because the mayor should not have so much power over the boards and commissions, and they should be very much independent of the mayor, and they should be servants of the city, and not specifically just the mayor. And I'm just going to say this again, because I'll sort of dunk on him now. What the heck, Andy? Why did you have to treat Farhan like that?
Thank you. We are to the consent agenda. Item 6 has a substitute, so that needs to come off the consent agenda.
Okay. Vice President Carter.
I will move to accept the substitution. Oh, well, do I need, okay, thank you, sorry. I move the following consent agenda as follows. The tribute and recognition to Stephanie Angel for her outstanding service to the Lansing State Journal, her contributions to the Greater Lansing community, and her remarkable career in journalism. We're moving, pull item 6, 7, the social district, and to add the MI Entertainment Group, Inc., DBA Graywall Hall, and the M&amp;S1 LLC DBA of Joloff Afro Caribbean Lounge to the district, downtown social district. The reappointment of Carol Skilling as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2028. The reappointment of Irene Iris Cotton as the at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire on June 30th, 2029. Setting a public hearing on Act 2-2025, sale of city property, Lot 57, 1400 Block of Turner Street, which is set for September 22nd. The setting of a public hearing on the Brownfield Plan of 89, Number 89, Turner North Development, 1400 Block of Turner Street, for public hearing of September 22nd. And setting the public hearing on the Special Assessment Principles Shopping District Roll, 202025 Roll, set for September 22nd.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on these? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, then we are to item 6, the community funding.
All right. First, we are going to go to Councilmember Brown on the item. Or we can go to, we can go to, okay. We've got a substitute on the item.
Thank you. President Cost, I was about to say, President Spatafor. Yes, we had this before the committee and made some changes, and so I was going to let Councilman Spatafor, since he brought some of the specifics up to the amount that we got to speak on it. So thank you so much.
And then, is that a motion for the substitute with the correct number?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion to adopt the substitute is on the floor. Any further discussion? Councilmember Spatafor.
I'll just speak to this sub real quick. So the first therefore be it resolved was not accurate, and when it got pushed through the laserfish system to the packet, so we just wanted to make sure that was right before we sent it out, to include all the allowable expenses that we approved in committee. So that's the changes that are before you.
Great, thank you. And with the explanation on the changes between the substitute and the original, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. All right, so then I am looking for a motion now to adopt the substitute. I'm sorry, pass the substitute.
I would move for passage.
Okay. Councilmember Spatafor, proper motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to items 13 through 15, three lawsuit settlements for opioid agreements.
Vice President Carter.
All right, so for all three of these resolutions, and it was outlined at committee of a whole, that the city has grouped all of the three resolutions, because we are all group of plaintiffs, and in order to proceed as the government entity, there needs to be a resolution to opt into continuing the settlement. So these are rough settlements, but to proceed, the court needs to see how many in the groups of plaintiffs are willing to continue. So once the settlement is completed, there will be a second set of resolutions before council to amend the budget to receive those funds. And with that being said, I would move the resolution for the first lawsuit settlement, participation in the Sandoz opioid settlement agreement.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place for 13. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
The second one is the lawsuit, participation in the Purdue Sackler opioid settlement agreement and Michigan State subdivision agreement.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
And the third lawsuit settlement is the participation in the generic manufacturer's opioid settlement agreement at Michigan State subdivision agreement.
Okay, we have proper motion in place for item 15. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to ordinances for introduction. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 206, purchasing and contracts and sales, specifically sections 206.01, 206.02, 206.03, 206.05, 206.06, 206.07, and 206.16, to increase the dollar amount threshold for competitive bidding and related purchasing requirements to reflect inflation since 1994, and to provide for annual modification of the threshold in accordance with the Consumer Price Index. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember Hussein.
I mean, that pretty much explained it, right? So in this ordinance, there is a threshold that activates the competitive sealed bid process. That has been 15,000 since 1994. And so first, what this does is it actually resets that based on inflation to $31,000. But then beyond that, it calls for an annual modification of the threshold, sorry, in accordance with the Consumer Price Index. So essentially, the, our controller will actually report that to both the director, Ms. Stephanie Robinson, as well as the city council by May 1st, and then that new threshold essentially will go into place that July 1st. And so, again, it's just adding a definition for purchase price threshold, and then calls for the annual adjustment. And, sorry, the public hearing would be September 22nd. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Fantastic. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, item 17, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Lansing, Chapter 887, by adding a new section, 887.10, to provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes in the amount of 8% of shelter rents for not less than 618 workforce multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Evergreen Park Apartments and Townhomes pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966 as amended, MCL 125.1401, SEC. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the committee on development and planning.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, city clerk, for explaining that. So we just heard from the Greatwater Opportunity Capital, from Justin Golden and Matthew Timken, about their project, and what we are doing is setting a public hearing for September 22nd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing.
Okay, proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to item, ordinances for passage, and item 18, the reconsideration and amendment to ordinance 1339.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. First, I'm going to point to our city attorney to explain what we're doing here, and then I'll move to, for reconsideration.
Sure. So longtime viewers and astute watchers of, last, two weeks ago, council meeting, will recall that the scoring sheet that came, the scoring rubic that came out of committee was different from what was originally on the council agenda. And there was a brief break, and then a substitute was introduced that had the correct form of that resolution that had come out of the committee. The same thing actually ended up happening with the draft of the ordinance. The draft of the ordinance that came out of committee was not what was reflected in the council packet. So the ordinance as passed actually contains slightly incorrect information, and this was determined, and then I think there's going to be a series of votes to reconsider that and make the corrections.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would make a motion to reconsider an amendment under the council rules to ordinance 1339, amending Chapter 206, Section 206.02, to clarify the most responsive and responsible bidder for construction bids.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider on the table. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Garza.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to amend and substitute the ordinance with the correct draft.
Okay, so we have a motion to substitute. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes seven to one. Councilmember Garza.
Okay, now I'd make a motion to approve the correct draft of this ordinance.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. Clerk Swope, could you please do the roll vote?
Okay, on adoption of the ordinances substituted with the correct draft, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelivonaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Seven yays, one nay, the ordinance is adopted.
And do we have, Councilmember Garza?
I'd like to move for immediate effect.
Perfect, you're making my job easy tonight. We have a motion for immediate effect. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes seven to one.
Okay, and with that, we are to registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you wish to address the council at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the yellow form in the back with Sahan. We'll give you about another minute to start signing in. And with that, we are to the referral items.
Okay, Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by President Cost.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously.
We have items from the mayor, the reappointment of Mike Dombrowski as first ward member of the park board.
City operations.
Act 3, 2025, utility easement for 2020 and 2600 East Mount Hope Avenue for Consumers Energy.
Development and planning.
Soul Source Purchase, Human Relations and Community Service Department report of outbid as the supplier for 50 mod pods.
Ways and means.
Soul Source Purchase, Public Service Department report of Tetra Tech of Lansing as a consultant for the procurement of solar array AC side project at wastewater treatment plant.
Ways and means.
Soul Source Purchase, Public Service Department report of System Specialties as the vendor for three valve actuators.
Ways and means.
Soul Source Purchase, Police Department and Information Technology Department report of Leeds Online is the vendor for real crime investigation software.
Ways and means.
Soul Source Purchase, Police Department notification of LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Ram of Lansing as the vendor for two vehicles for special operations and violent crime teams.
Ways and means.
Communications and petition, communications expressing concerns with slot cameras from Austin Burke, Matt DeMay, and Michael Mulholland.
Place on file.
And communications regarding Evergreen Park property, formerly known as Autumn Ridge Apartments, located at 900 Long Boulevard from residents and the YMCA.
Development and planning.
We're to remarks by councilmembers.
Any further remarks by councilmembers this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move right along.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything more? We're going to dunk.
All right, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Megan Bachan, followed by Jake Colka. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Councilmember Jackson, I can answer a couple of the questions that you had earlier. There are 132 pink-tagged units that are still occupied by the residents who were originally there when the pink tags were placed. And then, as far as accepting of Section 8 vouchers, as many of you are aware, the state of Michigan made Section 8 voucher income a protected income for applicants in the state of Michigan that are seeking to rent. So we do have an obligation, as do all landlords now in the state of Michigan, to accept Section 8 vouchers. The caveat to that would be that they do need to still make, in addition to their, or pardon me, in conjunction with their voucher amount, they would need to make three times the monthly rental rate in order to qualify for market rate housing. This program is extremely important to us. We are the little engine that could, and with this, we could go a lot faster. Thank you all very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Jake Colka, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
My name's Jake Colka, and I'm the service manager at Evergreen Park. I've been in the property management industry for 20 years. Over half that time, I've been a service manager. I've worked for various ownership groups, property management companies in Lansing, East Lansing, and Oakhamas. I've been on the south side of Lansing for the last five years, working primarily at Evergreen Park. I originally started working at the property with the old ownership group, when it was Autumn Ridge. I was excited for the opportunity. I quickly realized, though, without resources and contractors, part- I quickly realized, though, without resources and contractors, parts, a vision, a willingness to deal with this deferred maintenance, it didn't matter how talented I or my staff was, and we were left in a really rough spot. Since Great Water purchased the property, to say the difference has been night and day is a massive understatement. Prior to purchase, I was presented with a vision on how we would attack this deferred maintenance head-on. I've been allowed to bring in local contractors that I've cultivated relationships with over the years and trust to help in this rehab, and I can fully stock a shop with parts. I can pretty much deal with whatever the property throws at me at the day-to-day quickly and efficiently and fix things in people's homes. We knew this was going to be a massive project when we started. But to elaborate on what Justin was talking about earlier, in less than a year, we will label a rehab and get licensed over 201 and two-bedroom homes. Over 90% of those are lived in right now. We're moving through the 400 townhomes as we speak, and by the end of this week, another townhome building will be completed and licensed. All the parts are in place for this to work. We have everyone supporting us from the ownership down to the staff, and I want to be clear, the greatest resource that we have is the maintenance staff. Vast majority of these guys live at Evergreen Park. They've lived there when it was Autumn Ridge. They know what this place was, and they can see what it can be. They come to work every day and make their community better. They make their neighbors' home better. They literally have bought in from day one at what needs to happen, and it's not a job to them. It's not a paycheck. They are here to make this neighborhood and community what it should be. You can't find that with employees. It is our greatest resource, and it's why I feel this will succeed. I just ask for your help, and let us turn this place into the neighborhood that Lansing needs, a healthy, affordable, and safe place for 1,000 people to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Ivan Droste.
Thank you. Again, this is, again, you know me, Nicholas Zandi, Old Everett Neighborhood Association President and Second Ward resident. And I'm going to be here to be speaking on the new charter proposed by the City Charter Commission and why, despite my intention of appearing at almost every single neighborhood-run Charter Commission meeting, that I will be voting no. Because I don't know if it's ever going to be shown on TV, so I might as well have to say it, and paraphrase what I previously said at the East Side. Now, while yes, I do believe felony convictions should at least be rolled back in order to comply with state law, however, as for what I will criticize about it is only increase the number of wards by one ward. Like, five wards is not enough to be a properly represented city of Lansing. It is just outright, I mean, like, that's the best compensation they gave us, like, five wards? That's still, and plus, you still got those four at-large seats, meaning that at least just under half the council is still going to get overly represented by the special interest groups, most notably the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce, which, by the way, endorsed Mike Bishop over Alyssa Slotkin when she first ran for Congress. So, they're not moderate Democrats, they're straight-up Republicans running them. Just to put that out there. And adding, having added none to that, while maybe I could live without a city manager form of government, even though I do see the benefits of it, however, if we're going to keep a strong mayor, and we're going to keep our elected city clerk as it is, why aren't we doing the same thing with the city attorney, making them elected? Why aren't you doing the same thing with the assessor, or the treasurer, or the internal auditor? If you want to make them independent of the council, which is what I think their intention was, they should be elected by the people and not appointed by the council or the mayor. And also, again, board appointments should be handled by the council first and foremost, not the mayor, because by then, it's a more collective and people-focused decision, and it's less of a pawn of the mayor. And the, and that is why I'll be voting no on this new city charter, because it is an insult and a slap in the face to the people who want to see a complete overhaul, and the fact that it's going to take 16 years to just to get a better charter makes it even more infuriating, and another reason why I'll be voting no. That's all I'm going to say, and I'll yield.
Thank you. Next, we have Ivan Droste, followed by Darren.
Ivan Droste, Ward 3. Firstly, I just wanted to comment again on the state of our unhoused neighbors here in Lansing. It's been two weeks since the last meeting, so we're two weeks closer to winter now. Overnight temperatures last night dipped into the 30s. I'd ask that everyone continue to, to think about these folks. They need your help, especially those who are living in the Fallen Angels encampment near Dietrich Park. They need a dumpster for their trash, they need toilets, they need running water, they need a warm bed. What they don't need is to be kicked out of their home. So, Mr. Mayor, you really need to drop this irresponsible lawsuit that you filed against the landowners near the park. And as far as the mod pod community goes, I hope that the council continues to, to work on a, a plan for what this community is going to look like, where it will be located. I really don't want to see the city of Lansing fumble this and end up delaying this. We've, we've learned that at the earliest, this is going to come into fruition by March. That's already too late. Any later would be really a disaster. Secondly, I want to thank the members of the council who have recently taken some time out of their day to meet with some of my compatriots at the Renters Too Damn High Tenants Union to discuss the tenant bill rights. We believe really strongly in this set of ordinances. We think that it's going to help claw back some power in the tenant landlord relationship and expand the rights of tenants here in the city. So, we look forward to continuing to working with you on that. For those of you who we have not met with yet, we extend that invitation to you. And, yeah, we just want to keep that channel of communication open, and we look forward to continuing to working with you on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you, and finally is Darren, who's our final speaker.
So, how about road construction? Saginaw, Palma Zoo, and Michigan, as well as 496, all at the same time, getting around town is a challenge. Like, logistics weren't thought about prior to implementation. This leaves me concerned about the timing and the rollout of the mod pods, but I want to talk about accountability. You are the government of the city of Lansing. This means that you are accountable for and to the people of Lansing, all of the people of Lansing, not just those who vote for you, even those of us who are poor or struggling, maybe especially those of us who are struggling because we rely on you for survival. To absolve yourself of responsibility to us, you throw us out of public spaces, spaces that were reserved for all of us. You throw us under the rug, you pretend we do not exist. You have your police push us onto private property, private property owners who did not welcome us and may not be comfortable with us being there, and then you punish those property owners for our existence on their property. It is not the private property owner's responsibility to make sure that we survive, to provide places for us to use toilet facilities, and to discard our trash. It is not the private property owner's responsibility to ensure that we have housing. It is our government's. It is yours. Other municipalities have bathrooms and parks, but Lansing does not. Why is that? Why, where are the park, the trash receptacles in our parks? Why are public spaces denied to those of us who need a place to exist? This lawsuit to punish the private property owners for doing the bare minimum that the city of Lansing should be doing and has failed to do, while the city washes their hands clean of their own responsibilities, unacceptable. Further is the timing. The timing of the lawsuit originally lines up to wash the mayor's hands clean right before an election. Then, when providing a three-month extension, it served to kick people out of their home and community just after an election, but right before winter, risking them freezing to death. Now, it risks throwing them out in the dead mid, middle of winter, denying them the capacity to keep themselves warm in the interim. Is this intentional, or is it poor timing and poor planning? Let's not forget that the city rescue mission is not an option for most of these people. The residents of Dietrich live in fear every day for their lives, and you sit high and mighty believing that you are entitled to put them in this position. Accountability is acknowledging the suffering that you are causing and seeking to remedy that suffering, not using the court system to drive people to their deaths. Step up, help us get bathroom facilities, and trash pickup, running water, and warmth to this camp until we can find these residents a path to housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. We are adjourned at 8:41.